Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, December 5th, 2023 Planning Commission Work Session. Ms. Adamois?
Happy holidays, everyone. We have a very short agenda today. The first application, UP 2320 Kings Gate, has requested a deferral to the January's meeting. The new case of subdivision should be a relatively short case. It meets all the subdivision requirements, then of course your nomination, then the recruitment council, so we move forward with the schedule that's listed.
Okay. Is Brian Swetts here?
Well, yeah, no, Mrs. Swetts isn't here. However, Ms. Chopp will make the presentation.
Okay.
All righty. Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I am Julie Chopp, Manager of Current Planning and Zoning with the Portsmouth Planning The staff coordinator for this major subdivision application for the fourth phase of Afton-Green is Brian Swetts. In his absence, I'll be providing the presentation. The state code provides for a locality to enact a provision for preliminary subdivision plots that create more than 50 lots to be reviewed by the -- and tentatively approved by the Planning Commission. Please note that the staff report did indicate that this application would also be heard by City Council. However, Planning Commission makes the final approval determination on major subdivisions, so this application will not be heard by City Council. The city's subdivision ordinance indicates that a major subdivision can only be denied if deficiencies exist that can be referenced by a specific code section. And this application does appear to meet all of the major subdivision standards. Zero George Washington Highway lies to the south of the rest of the Afton-Green neighborhood. The property is 11.75 acres of undeveloped land. The site is mostly forested with some grassy open space that's adjacent to Deep Creek Boulevard. The site is zoned conditional urban residential master planned overlay. So to the east of the site is Safety Town and the Bodaway Golf Course, which are zoned urban residential. To the west is a shopping center zoned general mixed use or GMU. To the north and south of the subject property are residential uses zoned UR or urban residential. The applicant is requesting to subdivide 11.75 acres to create 59 lots as the fourth and final phase of the Afton-Green subdivision. Fifty-seven of the lots will be for residential development, while two lots will be reserved for open space. 2.1 acres will be dedicated as public right of way. The average residential lot size is 6,102 square feet. After removing the dedicated brights of way -- or streets and open space parcels, the residential density will be 7.24 units per acre. Phase four of Afton-Green will connect to phase three at Bearing Way and Endicott Road with an additional ingress and egress point at Deep Creek Boulevard. Mannmouth Street is the proposed new public street within phase four. The Afton-Green development is subject to developmental guidelines. These were first approved as part of a rezoning in April of 2011, and most recently were revised in May of 2016. An architectural review board has been established to review proposed elevations to ensure they are in compliance with the design guidelines. And the design standards are present to control materials, lot size, impervious cover, accessory structures, and design finishes like doors and windows. Staff recommends approval of this major subdivision with the recommended conditions listed in the staff report. The layout and design guidelines support the goals of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan, including the building of compatible development and planting of trees. The project also provides needed modern housing for Portsmouth. The preliminary subdivision plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance and thus should be approved by Planning Commission. To my knowledge, no public comments were received, and this concludes my presentation. I will stand by if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Chopp. Commissioner?
Yes. I'm going to assume that the utilities will be underground.
Yes, all new.
I mean, but I don't want to assume anything.
Well, it's actually required in the --
Yeah.
-- city code.
It has to be underground. And the other point I wanted to make, on the slide, when you first pointed at it, that particular street looked horrible. Will there be a requirement right there? Who will be responsible for improving that? Do we know?
Yes, so that would --
Is that?
I mean, I think that as part of the subdivision, they would be required to make necessary improvements to adjacent roads, but that would be up to the discretion of the engineering department. So these get routed to the engineering department, so they would --
And they can put the hammer on that.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions?
I'd like to ask something just out of curiosity. I'm sorry.
You're fine, go ahead.
Just, can you tell us, the houses that are existing there, how many of those are -- are any of them vacant? Have they all been rented? Do you know?
So like, in the remaining -- or in the other phases of Afton-Green?
In the other phases, yeah.
I do not know that information.
It looks pretty well built out and occupied.
I know that we have been getting a lot of new single-family site plans for -- so they're continuously building them, but I'm not sure what the occupancy rate is.
Okay, thank you.
And yet, then, Stana, this did start in like 2011, and this is phase four, so over time, you know, selling units, so.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Taylor, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, based on the picture that was up there, it looks like it's going to go from George Washington Highway to Deep Creek Boulevard? Is that?
That is correct. The entire subdivision.
Yeah, so if we look at this one over here, I think that this is showing just the remaining phase four, but I believe that the other phases do -- I feel like they do abut George Washington Highway.
They front.
They front on George Washington Highway.
The actual pictures, I know, was of Deep Creek Boulevard, right across from Safety Town.
Yeah.
And it looked like it was either a remodeled home there or new construction, so I was just trying to see would that be -- was that house like to the back of the other houses or how would that? I would have to probably ride past there to see.
It's basically the balance of the old method, high school.
Oh, no, I know exactly where it's at, but if you go back to the pictures.
Yeah, I know.
Right there. See, that looks like either probably a remodeled home, and that's Deep Creek Boulevard, right? The picture in the west.
Yeah, so there's -- both of these streets are Deep Creek Boulevard. And this is actually the site on the west, and then the shopping center is on the other side.
Okay.
Looks like it's had re-siding on it.
Yeah, you're looking at the --
I remember it's an older house.
I do have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Once again, I don't want to assume.
I guess that would be the interest of the neighborhood.
These new development housing will be owner-occupied, or will they be subject to being rented?
I'm not sure if there's the -- we don't typically deal with the ownership. Like, we look at the land use, so if, I think if, you know, if somebody purchases it, the dwelling, and they decide to rent it out, like, the city doesn't really have any discretion on that.
Normally owner-occupied, but as you said, you --
Things could change.
There's no law to say you can't rent a place, but normally in a case like that, they don't want to occupy that. And obviously focusing even more on this, since this is not going to council.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and certainly I would not like to see almost 60 single-family houses built, and then they end up quickly turning over into rental housing, because we need owner-occupied housing in the city of Portsmouth, so that's why I want an answer to the question. Would you like to speak to that, Attorney?
Yeah, no, I'll be happy to speak to it. I think, I just want to go back to what Julie mentioned at the beginning. This actually already received a use permit that was recommended for approval by Planning Commission and approved by council, so the development itself has its use permit.
You're talking about the totality of all the phases?
Everything, including this phase. Usually when you see something like this for the Planning Commission, it's a legislative action, you deciding whether or not you like the design and the proposed project. But this case, it's just a plat, and it's just whether the plat that they have to put to record that's going to show all the dimensions of the lots complies with the Portsmouth Code. And for whatever reason, the code, and it's been this way forever, says that for major subdivision plots, the decision on that has to go up to the Planning Commission for approval. But really, this is not a legislative decision about how it looks or anything like that. It is simply, does this plat comply with the city code requirements, the dimensional requirements?
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
To that exact question, actually, if I can ask Attorney Miller, so since really we have to either say yes, it meets the requirement as defined in the charter or code, we have no discretionary but to say yea or nay on this unless it doesn't, is there a reason why we're even contemplating this? Or can it be looked at as maybe a recommendation from this body to allow the administration to continue this, to do this work without that? Because it seems like it's an extra step for really no apparent reason.
Right, well, it's a good question, and one of the resolutions you approved at the end of the meeting, last meeting, was for redoing the subdivision ordinance, which is what this comes out of. And so, in the process of redoing subdivision ordinance, that will be looked at, things like that will be looked at, whether that -- and I don't know whether it comes from state code that you must act on this, or whether it's simply something that Portsmouth has always done, but that's something that, if it's not state code required, can be altered in amendment to the subdivision ordinance.
If it's the consensus of the commission, I think it would be wise for us to do that. If we have no authority in this type of action, what's the point of, you know, if somebody came out and 30 people came out and spoke against this, we're going to have to stamp the rubber stamp of yes anyway on it if it meets the requirement.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, so what's the point of putting, you know, this commission in the line of fire? Even if we hated this project, there's nothing we can say, so, you know, maybe that's something we should look at as part of this, you know, review.
Is this the land that Danny Meeks owned at one time?
I'm not ex -- I think so.
Oh, you don't have to answer.
I think so, but, yeah.
Is it not? Thank you.
Yes.
And I do have one more question. And it's on my computer, so I have it. But when I went out here, how is, are people going to be able to cut through George Washington and go to Deep Creek with, like, to cut through the neighborhood to avoid going around?
So the three access points to this phase are from Deep Creek Boulevard, Bearing, or it looks like Bearing Way, and then Mammoth.
And then it goes to George Washington?
I believe that sounds right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's a light there at George Washington.
Yeah. Has this been, I guess, the comments from traffic engineering, engineering, it didn't address, they didn't, you know, say anything specific about this, about any through traffic going through the neighborhood? I guess that wasn't a concern?
I don't, I don't believe that there was any comments from engineering when this was routed.
But you said it's going to go back before engineering department anyway, right? Didn't I hear you say that? Did I misunderstand?
Well, I think they'll review, they probably already submitted their comments on this, so.
From prior?
Yeah.
They've got to get their site plan approval.
Okay.
So the way it's configured, the way it's going to be constructed?
That might be something just, you know, to think about when they submit their comments, that maybe, you know, that just be taken into consideration for through traffic. I know it's not anything that would hold up, you know, what we're doing or anything, but just maybe through discussions with them and approving the site plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, any additional questions?
Yeah, we'll have to go through site plan review.
No? Okay. Commissioners, today we have to nominate officers for 2024, so I need nominations for vice chairman first.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question of clarity?
Sure.
Who still will be here? Is everybody going to still be here, I guess, in terms of?
Everybody.
Everybody still has a year left?
Yes. I have one year left.
Right.
How many of you have left, Donna?
I think you --
I have one year.
One year.
Yes.
Everybody has at least one year, so we're not electing someone that has less than a year. That's reasonable, I suppose.
Well, no, no. Okay, so unless there's any -- do you want to do this again? Do you want to be?
I'll stay if no one else wants to be the vice chairman. I'm not going to fight anybody for it, but I don't mind staying.
Yeah, I would nominate Donna Coleman to be vice chair.
Okay. Okay, and then the next one is chairman.
I would nominate Sherri Daxton, if she would like to stay.
Would you like to stay?
Yes.
Yes.
Please. Regina, can you tolerate me one more year?
One more year, girl.
And so, if I'm hearing correctly, you all's final term is after one more year.
Yes, ma'am.
2024. I actually got filled in for someone who had to step down for family reasons.
Right.
So I completed their term.
Okay.
And then just got renewed, so it might be a little off kilter.
Because I was thinking maybe your term, you had more than one year on your term coming up.
I don't think so. I think it's 2024. It'll be okay. I'll sit with the office for the next 12 months.
I don't know, I guess I thought it's a little staggered with the expiration of your term, but you don't, you don't.
We probably, we probably should have, I guess, with the --
It was just a unique situation, I think.
But you would have a full, you would have a full term potentially after this one,
that correct?
No, this is my second term.
This is your second full term?
Yes, next year.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, then our next item is a discussion and approval of the 2024 Planning Commission meeting schedule. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about the schedule?
That January meeting hits hard.
I personally would like to ask, is staff, is staff okay with this calendar? Since you all are boots on the ground.
Okay.
It'll be for me to help, y'all help.
Okay, if there's nothing else, no further discussion. Ms. Adamois, do you have anything else?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm not sure with the deferral on the Kings Gate Crossing UP 2320. Is it appropriate for me to ask a question since we are going to go into deferral? Yeah, ask them. General question, maybe staff can look into to.
Okay.
In the packet, it does look like it has a list out of the storage facilities and the city of Portsmouth. Is that something we put together, or is that something the applicant put in?
The staff put together.
Your staff put that one together, so it's been independently reviewed by you guys for?
Yes, we wanted to give you a general idea of what was in the general area.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of discussion amongst citizens about the number of storage facilities, and I was just going to ask for you guys to independently, if this was an applicant-provided slide, to independently verify that between then and there, but it sounds like you guys already done that, so.
What I plan is Valerie, usually here she did that, she's a GIS person.
They did submit a market study that showed, or that, you know, indicated that it was a needed use.
I saw that, and, you know, actually, the plot also has been there for a long, long time, undeveloped as well, so, yeah, that's something we have to probably wrestle with, I guess, at some point, as a city of, you know, how many is too many?
I just wanted to give you a complete picture of what was in the area.
Well, I appreciate that, that it's actually there graphically. I just wanted to make sure it was something you guys had vetted, not just applicant-provided. Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else, Ms. Adamois, you got anything else? Okay, well then, commissioners, we are finished with the Planning Commission Work Session for today, and so the meeting is adjourned. We'll see you in the chambers at 1:30. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, December the 5th, 2023, in the City of Portsmouth City Council Chambers. Madam Secretary.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Five members of the Planning Commission are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the November 21, 2023 Public Hearing. If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion.
I move for the adoption of the minutes from November 21st.
Madam Chair, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the November the 21st, 2023 Public Hearing, and you will be voting electronically. The minutes are approved by a vote of five to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2024, at 12:30 PM, City Council Chamber, City Council Conference Room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 PM, City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at the January the 9th, 2024 Public Hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cell phone at this time if you have not already done so. Our first case was deferred from our November the 21st, 2023 Public Hearing, UP-23-20 Kings Great Gate Crossing Don Scott Esquire. On behalf of Safe Stow Real Estate Company, LLC, request a use permit for a four-story, approximately 104,700 square foot self-service storage facility with 770 units on approximately 2.2 combined acres of land located at 3206, 3208, and 3210 Airline Boulevard, and a portion of 3290 Airline Boulevard in the general mixed-use GMU zoning district. The future land map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this properties as part of a mixed-use corridor. The properties are owned by Baton Two LLC and are further described as Tax Map 582, Parcel 2, 3, and 4, and a portion of Tax Map 583, Parcel 4. The staff coordinator is Julie Chopp, and this application is deferred to the January the 2nd, 2024 Public Hearing. If there is anyone here who would like to address this application, the public hearing is opening. You have an opportunity for five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Chair. Is there any questions? I'm approaching, ma'am.
Okay. No questions. Madam Chairman, we will keep this public hearing, we will not close the public hearing on this item, and this item is deferred until the January the 2nd, 2024. We do need a motion to defer.
Madam Chair. I move that we defer UP 23-20 to the January 2nd, 2024 Meeting.
I second.
Thank you, Commissioners. Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second to defer UP-23-20 to our January the 2nd, 2024 Meeting, and you will be voting electronically. This item is deferred by a vote of five to zero. Our next item, S U B-23-00025 Craddock. Hargit Ure Associates is requesting a major subdivision of 4,300 George Washington Highway to create 60 new parcels. This is the fourth phrase, phase of the previously approved Afton-Green project. The Comprehensive Plan's future land use map recommends low-to-medium density, single-family residential development on the parcel. The parcel is 11.75 acres and is further described as Tax Map 461, Page 110. The staff coordinator, Brian Swetts, Julie Chopp will be presenting this, Julie Chopp will not be presenting this application. Okay, will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
My name is Chris Stubbs. I'm a civil engineer with Hargit Ure Associates. Our business address is 901 Portsona Parkway, Portsmouth, Virginia.
Thank you.
All right, Chris Stubbs, civil engineer with Hargit Ure Associates, and our business --
Spell that last name, please.
Stubbs, S-T-U-B-B-S.
Thank you.
All right. So this is the final phase of Afton. It is two, it's 58 single-family lots and two open spaces, one for the pond and then one up front near Deep Creek Boulevard. It completes the Afton project once the plat is, or sorry, once the subdivision is completed. The subdivision does meet all the requirements of the ordinance. Afton has a set of development design guidelines that is subject to, so it's a master planned overlay. And, let's see, the project was, the project has already been rezoned, and it's already addressed all of that aspect of it. So I'm just here for any questions. If you have any, just let me know.
Commissioner Heinz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You just mentioned 58. I think the staff report has 59. Can we just have clarity as to regarding that?
Let me, because there are two, there's two open space parcels, so depending on how you count it, and I'll just double-check real quick.
I appreciate that, thank you.
It is 58 single-family and two open space.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question of staff?
Yes, Commissioner Heinz.
So do we need to modify our anything in? So do we need to modify our, anything in this document before we vote on it, since there is 58 and two versus your 59 as presented?
There's no need for modification, because the plat will be approved as it's submitted.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Adamo, would you speak up so she could hear what you just said or repeat it?
We can always change the staff report, but the plat is gonna be approved as submitted with the number that's listed on the plat.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Stubbs, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And this, this does not have anything directly to do with the application for the final phase, but I'm, I'm, I'm very curious, as a citizen in Portsmouth, for the first three phases, what was your percentage of participation with minority contractors?
So I'm not directly involved with the financial matters and, and actually the hiring of the contractor. I'm just, I'm with the civil engineering firm that did the plans and the platform, so I'm, I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
So you don't have to answer for that, and so then you would not have to answer for the phase four either?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions? If there's, Madam Secretary? Thank you, Mr. Stubbs.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item S U B dash 23 dash 00025. I have no registered speakers. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name, and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any more discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second for S U B dash 23 dash 00025 with conditions.
I'd like to make a nomination to approve S U B 2325 with conditions.
I second. Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve S U B dash 23 dash 00025 with conditions, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, under New Business, we held our nominations of officers for 2024. Madam Secretary?
Yes, Madam Chairman. The slate of officers for our 2024 Planning Commission is Vice Chairman nomination is Commissioner Donna Coleman, and for Chairman is Commissioner Sherri Thaxton, and we, we will be voting electronically. We need a nomination for Vice Chairman. We, we just need to vote.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate for Vice Chairman Donna Coleman, and for our Chairman Sherri Thaxton for the 2024 Planning Commission year.
We're voting one at a time for Chairman first, Vice Chairman.
Okay, forgive me for being expeditious there. Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Donna Coleman to be the Vice Chairman for the Planning Commission and 2024.
We have a second. What does she say?
We need a second.
We need a second for Vice Chair.
I second that.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second for Donna Coleman as our Vice Chairman for our 2024, and you will be voting electronically. Our Vice Chairman for the 2024 is Donna Coleman by vote of five to zero. We need a motion now for our Chairman.
I'd like to nominate Sherri Thaxton for Chairman for 2024.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to have Sherri Thaxton as our Chair, Chairperson for 2024, and you will be voting electronically. Sherri Thaxton is our Chairman for the 2024 by vote of five to zero.
Okay, Commissioners, the next item under New Business is the approval of the 2024 planning calendar. Madam Secretary, do we need a motion and a second for that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the 2024 calendar that was submitted to us the last meeting for 2024. I second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we have a first and a second.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. The calendar, planning calendar for the 2024 year is approved by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, is there any further business? Ms. Adamo, any further business?
No further business.
Okay, hearing none, this meeting, I'm sorry, let me back up one second. I would like to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday.
Same to everyone.
All right, hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.